Good evening. My name is Stacy Pitts and on behalf of the Old Bridge PTA President's Council, I would like to welcome you to Candidates Night. We will begin with a brief statement from each of the candidates in the order they appear on your ballot. There are five candidates running for three seats, each for a three-year term. These brief statements will be followed by an open question and answer forum. You will receive three minutes for your opening statement, and when the time goes off, you'll be told. One point, one and a half minutes will be given for answering each question after in the open forum. Again, when the timer goes off, your time will be up. Candidate one on your ballot is Matt Solakowski, who could not attend tonight's event. First, you will hear from candidate number two on your ballot, Jill Decaro. The third candidate on your ballot is Allison Boss. And the fourth candidate, Frank Weber, and our last candidate of the evening, Lisa Lentz. We will begin with candidate number two, Jill Decaro.
Good evening, and thank you for hosting this event, and thank you for having me. My name is Jill Decaro, and I am ballot position number two. Just a little bit about myself, I've lived in the district for about 22 years. I have three children, ages 27, 25, and 23, and they all went to the Old Bridge, through the Old Bridge school system, Charah, Sandberg, and Salk, respectively, and a high school. When my oldest son first went to school, I knew immediately that I needed to be involved in his education. So, aside from being a fly on the wall in the school so I could see everything he was doing, I opted to become an active member of the PTA. By the time when he was in first grade, I was on the board, I was VP of fundraising, and it just took off from there. I've held many board positions on PTA. And became PTA president of Charah, then moving on to Sandberg. I held multiple positions in Sandberg, became PTA president of Sandberg. Then in between there, I became coordinator of the PTA President's Council, who's hosting this event tonight, and then after that, I was the president of the Old Bridge PTSA, the high school PTSA. So, that is, that's my passion, my involvement with the children. I also, in that time, became a paraprofessional aide in different, the first time I was a one-on-one aide in a gen ed class, then I became a parent in the self-contained class. So, I have a pretty good perspective from the parent on the outside, the para on the inside. So, I have a pretty good, different perspectives. The reason I'm running again, this will be my second term, the reason I'm running again for the Board of Education is that we just still have work to do. My first three years, these first three years have been a whirlwind from the shooting in Florida, my first, first, I think it was the second month I was on the board, there was a shooting in Florida, and we had a lot of fear and anxiety amongst our parents. And we reacted immediately and got security systems put in place. And since then, it's been one thing after another, and we've been in a very reactive phase. I would like to get to the point of being proactive, building on programs that we have, and hopefully, we can get past this pandemic and we can start to, like I said-
Thank you, Mrs. Decaro. Next, we'll hear from our third candidate on the ballot, Allison Boss.
Hi, everybody. Also, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Allison Boss. I have been living in Old Bridge for 25 years, well, 26 years this year. I had two children, I have two children, that went through the Old Bridge School District. My son graduated in 2004, high school, and then went on to Rutgers and graduated Rutgers. And my daughter, Alyssa, who is the reason why I'm actually here tonight and doing all of this, went through the special education programs in Old Bridge. She is 31 years old right now, and she went until she was a super senior, and it was an amazing experience for her. I've been a PTA volunteer like Joe for many years, 25 years, most of them involved in the Special Education PTA, which is where I'm sure a lot of people know me from. Also, I was the president of the Shepherd School PTA. That's where Alyssa started, an amazing school there. She, I also sit on the volunteer board for Special Projects for Special Children, which is a nonprofit that supports Camp Robin, which is a program in a township, which is not going on right now, for the children with IEPs and special needs, up to adults. So, she is still involved in that program as well. I also work at Kohl's as an assistant store manager and brought a program that we have there to where schools get grants for the children and programs of Old Bridge. So, they were $500 grants, which helped a lot of the children and the schools in Old Bridge as well. I, notice. I am, I wanted to be on the board. I just felt like it was like a natural progression for me to all the volunteer I did, and just to be on the board and still be that person that the parents can go to. I was an advocate over my years on SEPTA, sitting with parents at IEP meetings, and I just feel like being on the board is like the natural progression for me to be there to support the parents and the children, like a bridge between the board and the families in Old Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Boss. Now, we will hear from candidate number four, Frank Weber.
My name is Frank Weber, and I'm number four on the ballot, and I have served 18 years on the board previously between 1993 and 2007. I was president three times and vice president twice. My wife and I moved here in 1974, and my wife and I have raised four children, all graduates of the school system. I loved this down then, and I still do today. I've been a community volunteer since 1979, including sports, church, township committees, and I currently serve on the library board and the OBMUA. I was president of the board during a highly successful 2001 referendum. I also initiated a change in school nursing services in 1993, which has saved millions in the 25 years it has been in place. I'm running because I believe the current board is not protecting your interests. Your school-aged children are saddled with the worst reopening plan in the county. They will receive only four hours in class per week when we eventually open, which is 13% of normal. We can and much, much do much better. We received a large jump in state aid, starting in 2008. Our enrollment then, in 2005, has dropped 1,400 students up to the last year, 2018. In 2011, we moved to the November election cycle with no right to vote on the budget as long as it was capped at 2%. Two years ago, the state cut $15 million in state aid, which is to be cut over a seven-year period ending in 2024, '25. We still owe $11 million against that. I voted no to the last six budgets because we were getting too much state aid, and why should those boards have been adding 2% each year to your local tax bill when it didn't need the money? I voted no on six of those last budgets for that reason. We have $175 million budget, and I have an extensive business background, which I will use to rein in expenses without cutting programs. Although I no longer have children in the system, I am committed to a quality education for all children. As a senior, I want young people from our school system to be able to reach their goals and serve the Old Bridge community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. And now, we'll hear from our final candidate, number five on the ballot, Lisa Lentz.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. First off, I would like just to say that I appreciate everyone at home that's taken the time out of their evening to participate and watch this. I can't imagine what your day is like, teaching and helping your children learn all day, and then taking more time out to watch this. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Lisa Lentz. I am fifth on the ballot. I have been on the board for the past three years and would love to be reelected. A little background on myself, I have been part of the Old Bridge community for about 19 years. My son went through the Old Bridge school system and is currently serving as an officer in the Marine Corps. I hold a master's in business and accounting. I have worked for a Broadway theater company for the past 24 years, where I worked my way up in the accounting department, and now I sit as director of the human resource department. I have the business know-how to make hard decisions and the accounting knowledge to help balance the budget. During my time on the board, I served as chairman of the negotiations committee, and along with my fellow committee members, helped broker a fair deal for both sides, the teachers' union and administration. I don't vote for or against something because of pressures or friendship. I vote the way my heart tells me to, the way that benefits the students and the taxpayer the best. I feel the community deserves a board member that will fight for their children and do what's best for them, even if it involves asking the hard questions or going against the board or administration. We had had to make some difficult decisions in the past few years, as Jill just mentioned. Budget cuts strangled our funding for great programs, and sadly, these cuts are not easing up over the next few years. We are facing many more budget cuts in the future. The Old Bridge community needs a board member that understands finances, can read financial statements, and will push for financial transparency. I was one of the few board members that questioned the administration on their reopening plan. Being a single working mom, I don't know how I would have done virtual learning. I cannot imagine how working parents feel, having to choose between their jobs, paying their bills, or staying home and watching their children and help teach them. The administration, although the plan was good, did forget a huge portion of their community when they developed the plan. Understand, safety does come first. That is my priority. But with proper protocols and PPEs in place, we should have had a plan for the students with working parents, elementary school age, and students with special needs that require in-person learning. The community deserves someone who will fight for all of you and will remember all of you when developing future plans. Old Bridge is very lucky to have so many good people seeking election this year. Each of us possess skills that would benefit the board in every way. If given the opportunity, I would like to continue to fight.
Thank you, Mrs. Lentz. Just a reminder to the candidates, just make sure you turn your mics off when you're not speaking so we don't get feedback. Thank you. We're now going to enter our open question and answer portion of the evening. The questions this evening are being posed by Old Bridge residents and taxpayers that have the same concerns as you. I urge you to listen to this program to enable you to make an informed decision on who you want to represent your children for the next three years. For those who are joining us at home, you can continue to email your questions to our panel throughout tonight's live streaming at obptacandidattonight@gmail.com. Our first question is for all of our candidates, and we'll begin with Mrs. Decaro for her first answer, followed by Mrs. Boss, Mrs., excuse me, Mr. Weber, and Mrs. Lentz. Our first question is, what would you say to teachers who are apprehensive about returning to school, either out of fear or health conditions?
Well, the first thing I would say is that I understand. This is such, COVID-19 is, doesn't show any favoritism. It doesn't say, oh, you know, because you're a teacher, we're not, I'm not going to, you know, touch you. So, I do understand, and I understand your fear. I will say that, you know, we, as a district, are doing our best to provide the appropriate PPE and the appropriate social distancing, especially with our hybrid plan to, you know, well, now we're virtual, but when we move to our hybrid plan, we are trying to limit the amount of students in the classroom for their protection, for the student's protection, as well as the teacher's protection. So, I would say to them that I do understand their fear, and I hope that we can provide any answers to any questions that they have.
Thank you, Mrs. Decaro. Mrs. Boss?
What a very daunting time I feel like we're in right now. I also feel for the teachers and understand their apprehension about going back to school. I just know that the board and administration will have everything in place for them. Like Jill said, if they have any questions or fears, that they could reach out to administration and the board in place now, that, you know, that would be able to, you know, help them and work through their fears. I can't imagine how difficult and scary it must be just to want to come back. I just hope that, you know, we could be there for them and that they could just feel comfortable that they could come to us and, you know, get them through and make sure that we have everything that we need for them, like Jill said, PPE and anything that they need. I hope that they just understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Boss. Mr. Weber?
I have confidence in the administration that they're doing everything on-site for those teachers who do return, that they will be well-protected within the CDC guidelines. For those who are apprehensive and have fear going, obviously, those people who could be older or have underlying health issues may very well qualify to be exempt from coming back under the CDC guidelines, and there is aid, I think, for those, and that's certainly what they should do. That leaves the group that's in between, people who may, may be a little older, may have some apprehensions, and in many cases, they're going to have to take whatever administrative positions that they can, meaning whether it's an extended leave, a leave of absence, or whatever, because obviously, it's traumatic for somebody to come back in if they have an overwhelming fear of their situation. But I think the school, the school administration is, is going to do everything that's required to make sure that those who do come back are properly protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lentz?
I'm just going to echo basically what the other three candidates just said. The administration does have the teachers' best interest at heart, and obviously, their fear is real. And in these uncertain times, it's understand, I understand being fearful of coming back. But with proper protocols, with PPEs in place, and a collaboration between the teachers and administration, I think that we could find a safe middle ground for everyone to work with, to bring them back where they do feel secure in teaching the students. I know a lot of teachers that would love to be back in the classroom, and I think it's important to work together to create an environment that's safe and that you feel secure coming back to.
Thank you, Mrs. Lentz. Our second question is for all of our candidates as well. What are your thoughts on the current level of special education programs and extracurricular activities? And what programs and extracurricular activities would you bring to the district to encourage more inclusion and participation from families? We'll start with Mrs. Boss, please.
I'm sorry. Could you just repeat just the beginning? I'm sorry.
Sure. What are your thoughts on our current level of special education programs and extracurricular activities, and then what programs would you bring to encourage inclusion and participation in our district?
So, extracurricular was something that was, back when I first moved to Old Bridge, was something that I was like aware that there wasn't a lot of extracurricular activity for our kids, inclusion, or just back then, not even that. So, my goal would be to just work maybe with the township and the Department of Special Education, and just try, I mean, and I know now it's hard, especially since we're not in school, and just try and maybe get some activities that the kids can do together. I just feel like that they needed more, more extracurricular activities. And as far as the programs go, I, I feel like the, we have really great programs here in Old Bridge for our kids with special needs, me being a parent of one. It was always great programs. I felt that the programs were really great and... And, I'm sorry. Just like I'm a little bit nervous.
That's time. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I can't.
Back in when we were doing the long range plan, and the, starting from 1986 up through 2001, we set up a prototypical school, and one of the things that we noticed then about special ed programs, many of the children were clustered in a few schools, and within their classification, if it was possible to do, we made suggestions to the administration, which were acted upon at that time, which would, when at all possible, would put siblings in the same school building, whether the special ed child was older or younger, we thought that would be one of the things that might help, help them, you know, through the day. We also encouraged as much interaction between where kids could be mainstreamed as possible early on. The good news about the state funding cut, if there is any good news, is that special ed funds have not been touched at all, and I don't expect that to happen in the future. That doesn't mean, because the rest of the district isn't losing money elsewhere, that there might be some trickle-down aspect of it. As far as extracurricular, given, given the way the job market is and everything, I think any extracurricular activities where we can get children involved in business opportunities with the township, with merchants, when they get their opportunity to open for those kids who may not be destined for college right away.
Sorry about that. Mrs. Lentz?
Prior to the pandemic, I think we had some really great extracurricular programs in place, and our kids were thriving. With the pandemic, it's difficult to say what program should be in place and what shouldn't. I think any interaction with the kids is beneficial. Get them out of the house, get them interacting with each other, that's great. So, anything that we can put in place that would be safe right now would benefit them greatly. As far as special ed, I think, again, we have some fantastic programs in place. I think communication is key, and as long as that the administration is working with the parents and communicating and figuring out the best program for the child, and we continue on that path, we'll be successful.
Thank you, Mrs. Lentz. Mrs. Decaro?
Okay, so, you know, every year, we're growing and we're learning, you know? We have a wonderful special education program in Old Bridge, and we also have a very active special education PTA and special education parent advisory group. And they all work, I believe, very collaboratively together to bring to the board different ideas and different ways to create more inclusion with, within the special ed community. I know, you know, just with our character education program, you know, we were teaching our gen ed kids how to, you know, speak kindly and include, just on a general basis, you know, like in the lunchroom or things like that, not a, not a formal program. But I think that that is also extremely important, rather, you know, regular programs are important, but it's also important to teach our children to just include children on a, include the special education community on a regular level. And I think we do that very well in Old Bridge. We also have a very great program called Project Unify, which is, you know, a great program that, that has gotten plenty of accolades, and we have some of our special ed teacher and a para that started that program, so-
Thank you, Mrs. Decaro.
Very proud of them.
Okay, our next question is for Mrs. Lentz. Mrs. Lentz, according to centraljersey.com, you stated, "I will help preserve the voice of many working parents who are struggling with virtual learning. Friday, the district laid out their plan to open schools, and they will be offering night school for parents." Other than those two actions, what specifically do you think the board or the district should do to help working parents?
As I mentioned in my opening speech, I think it's important that parents aren't faced with the terrible choice of providing for their family or staying home to take care of their child and help them learn. I think the district needs to try to help those parents better. Parent classes, you know, the class at night that they mentioned is fantastic, but I think we really need to look at developing programs during the day that could alleviate some of the childcare issues that the younger children, the parents of younger children are facing. They need to be back in the classroom. I can't imagine how a student of elementary age is able to sit for several hours and learn virtually. There, it is impossible. They need that one-on-one interaction with the teacher, with classmates. And I think we need to start developing plans to help them, bring them back into the classroom, again, into a safe environment in which everyone feels comfortable going back into, but back into the classroom. And I think that board members should push the administration to create a program that would help those parents.
Thank you, Mrs. Lentz. Our next question will be for all of our candidates, starting with Mr. Weber. "As a parent of a kindergartner, I am, I am brand-new to the Old Bridge public school system, but I have been following the Board of Ed meetings for the last few months. My questions for the candidates are, what are your feelings toward getting our children back into school, and what do you believe is standing in the way of returning to physical school? Why do you think Catholic schools in our town have been able to do it and Old Bridge public schools have not?" Mr. Weber?
I don't know why I can particularly answer why they haven't done it, because I've been an advocate for it. I've done some research on the rest of the county, and when I, in my opening remarks, I thought we had one of the worst plans at four hours a day, one day a week. And I still maintain that's the problem. Toward the problem that, the question that Lisa was asked as well, one of the ways you can relieve parents of a lot of anxiety is to get these kids back in school sooner. Now, obviously, the choice to send your child to school is a personal, one of the family, and they have the options to do that, or if they're not sure, they have concerns, they can go all virtual, and I would still say to maintain that opportunity. But the survey, the original survey that went out to parents, had 41% that wanted them in the class, and then another percentage wanted hybrid, and a third percentage wanted all virtual. I really think if the district administrators look at some of the other plans that are in the county, there's no shame, there's no plagiarism here. If you see a plan that maybe is better than ours, you might consider implementing it, because they're out there, and some of them are East Brunswick, South Brunswick, and a number of other districts in the state. Bigger schools, bigger districts than us, with more people problems than we have. We're the only one who's running an ABC configuration. Virtually, everybody else is running just AB, two sections. That makes it a lot easier to give them more times in class.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lentz?
I feel sort of bad, because I just keep repeating myself on this, and I'm going to echo what Frank said, because I agree with him. I'm not sure why, you know, Catholic schools are doing this and we're not able to. There are lots of other public school districts that are being, are successful with this. And I think that there is no shame, like Frank just said, in looking at what they're doing and try to mimic something or create something similar for our district that would work for us. The kids do need to come back into the school system. They need to be in person. Again, that being said, it has to be safe. The teachers have to feel secure coming back. But that would be best for the children. And like I said, I keep repeating that because I feel passionate about that. They need to be back in the classroom, and it should be our responsibility to try to help the administration develop a plan that would succeed in getting them back in the classroom, into a safe environment, into a in-person learning environment, so that they can succeed. I think they're falling behind because of some lack of effort.
Thank you, Mrs. Lentz. Mrs. Decaro?
So, I'm sorry, can you just repeat the question one more time? I just want to make sure I understood it.
Sure. The questions were, what are your feelings towards getting our children back into school, and what do you believe is standing in the way of their physical return? And why do you think that Catholic schools in our town have been able to do it and not Old Bridge public schools?
Okay, so, I can't speak to Catholic schools. I'm not there. I don't know. So, but I can also, but I can tell you that since the beginning, we have had a reentry task force, and we have had a remote learning task force that have been working tirelessly, our administration has been working tirelessly to formulate a plan to get our kids back safely. We are very much following the data. We are, we originally were going to- We are, we originally were going to go initially to a hybrid, but we were given the option to go virtual and most county, most, most districts in Middlesex County did that. Yes, there are different plans in different, in different school districts, but the thing, but the point is that no two districts are alike. No, there are no, no two of the same circumstances. I know that the superintendents have meetings, they discuss, so they know, but not all circumstances are the same. We are getting the kids back October 12th. It's very important to get our special ed self-contained students back. So they're all going back K through 12. And also preschool and kindergarten are going back on October 12th because they're our most vulnerable kids. There is a, I know my time is running short. There's, we also decided that it was very important not to take the face of the teacher away from the children. So we decided that live streaming was the best and for that reason, we had to separate it.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro.
And, okay.
Can I ask a procedural question?
I'm sorry?
Could I ask a procedural question? I believe, I believe I'm correct in other years that if a question was asked specifically as one was asked to Mrs. Lent, that if other, other people up here can also respond to it as well.
I'm not sure about that, but I will find out when we're asking the next question. Is there a specific question you wanted to respond to that was already asked or just as a point of procedure? Okay, I'll find out as soon as, I'm just reading the questions right now. So I'll find out for you as soon as I read the next question. And actually, Mrs. Voss, I believe it's your turn to answer.
Yes, thank you. I also can't speak to, you know, about the Catholic schools. I really haven't done a lot of research on that. But as far as getting our kids back, I would say that every time I would read or, or research or look at any information, I would say we just need to get the kids back into school. I think they, they need to go back into school. I think they need to see their friends and their teachers. I think the plan, I, sometimes I felt like the plan was taking too long, but then when I found out why, it kind of made sense. I know the task force are working diligently to try and get the plan to get everybody back in. I just also feel like they just should get back in and then hopefully, hopefully, everything will be okay and then we can progress with getting everybody else back in. But they, I do agree, they do need to get back in and hopefully this process that we have in place now will work and everybody will get, you know, back in and be with their friends and their teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. As a answer to your question, Mr. Weber, this is not being run as a debate, but as an open forum. So we will not be allowing for rebuttals on questions. Thank you.
All right, ask the, uh, question, ask the questions of everyone.
Our next question is for you, Mr. Weber. I'm going to allow you three minutes to answer this question as it is quite lengthy. Mr. Weber, according to centraljersey.com, you stated that you served as a commissioner on the Old Bridge Municipal Utilities Authority and a trustee for the Old Bridge Library. In actuality, according to the Old Bridge MUA website, you are a chairman of the MUA and according to the Old Bridge Library website, you are the president of the library board. Why did you mislead the public in regard to your positions you hold on these organizations? If elected, would you hold three high-level positions in town governmental organizations? This would seem excessive for one person to have so much control over town making decis-, excuse me, town decision-making. How would you manage the demands of all three positions? Specifically, there was a meeting, if there were a meeting or event on the same night or two or more of the same group, how would you prioritize? Which organization would not be important to you? And lastly,
Okay.
You had trouble attending board meetings on your previous three years on the board. Now are you going to prioritize with the library board and the MUA? Which organization would take priority?
None of them need to be because they're all scheduled on different nights. They meet once a month, the board meets twice a month unless they have a special meeting and they meet for an agenda session and they meet for a regular session. Those are on Tuesdays and they don't conflict with the library, which is on a Wednesday and the OB/MUA, which is a separate meeting on a different Wednesday. So there are no conflicts that are ever coming up between those. And I have served, when I was on the Board of Education, I was also the president of the Overhead Soccer League and the Girls Soccer League and I had more meetings and more games and coaching than I could do that. I, I have the ability to multitask and I have not done my due diligence wherever I have served.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Our next question is for Lisa Lent, sorry, Mrs. Lent. "To the candidates who decide to hide from tough decision and abstain from vote on virtual learning, with more obstacles ahead that are sure to arise with situations going on that could affect the schools such as COVID and racial matters, et cetera, how do we know that you won't hide again when a decision needs to be made if you aren't going to tackle tough choices?"
I didn't hide. I, I openly asked questions about it and I was actually one of a few people on the board that questioned the reopening plan and challenged them to create a better plan that would include everyone in the district. It's unfortunate that some people felt that by abstaining, it was hiding, but it was pretty clear my feelings on the plan. Going forward, I, I think that we all need to work together. I think communication is key for any team to succeed. And I think that any board member up here that is elected or reelected needs to value communication and needs to work with the administration and the other board members to try to collaborate to create something that would succeed. And I don't think anyone hid that night. And I find it a little insulting, but everyone's entitled to their opinion. But I was one of the few people that challenged it. And I plan on challenging more things that I don't agree with. And I plan on voicing my opinion on more things I don't agree with. As I mentioned, I don't just vote one way because of pressure or friendship. I vote the way my heart and head tell me to, the way that's best for the student and the community. And I challenge anyone else in the community or up here to do the same because that's why you're up here. That's why you're, you're running for election to try to make the community better and make a better environment for the student.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Our next question is for all, excuse me, all of the candidates, starting with Mrs. Lent as our first response. "Do you see yourself primarily as a representative, representative of the community or of the school district?"
I represent the community and the students. Obviously, there is a level of representing the school district and a level in which you must act and do. But my sole purpose for running for the board is to make a better environment for the student, make a better district for the taxpayer and to look out for those people, not for myself, not for the, the administration. It's, you know, my job is to challenge and make the tough decisions which will be more beneficial to the student and the taxpayer, nobody else.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Mrs. DeCaro?
Yes, so I represent the students and the community, okay? I want to say the students first and, well, I represent the community and the students. So as board members, we are supposed to oversee the district. We have to oversee, we come up with district goals and we come up with board goals. We work collaboratively with the administration, all right? And our job is to see that those goals are met. So when we make those district goals, we make them to benefit the students and to benefit the community. That, that is what our job is. So that is who, that is who I represent, the community and the students.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Mrs. Voss?
Yes, thank you. I, I would represent the community and the students. I think that the connection, it would be, the best thing to do would be connect the community and the children and the, and the, all the students of Old Bridge. I think connecting them and just making everything work together because the students are part of the community. So I think that I would like to be like that bridge and try and get the communication together and try and bridge the community, the students, the board, administration. I felt like, I feel like that's part of what I have been doing for the last 25 years, working with the parents and bringing their concerns to director, coming to all the board meetings, agenda meetings and sitting there taking notes and just any kind of concerns that they had. That was, I felt like that's why I was there, to help the parents and the community and the children, you know, just get their answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Mr. Weber?
It sounds like there's a, the question is a little vague and the reason I say that is I would have thought that they're the same and obviously, three people said they represent both. But I think the question is probably looking for a difference between parents and the rest of the community. But in any event, whoever gets elected to this election is still going to be bound by the state law. There's not more than a 2% increase unless they have some extraordinary thing. So I think this is really about taxes and money in many cases and that's not going to change whoever you vote for. I've been a parent and I've had four kids go through the school system and I revere education and I will continue to do so whether I'm a parent or not or whether I'm a senior or not. So I think it's a divisive question and I support the community, all of the community, whatever role they serve, as a parent or a non-parent.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Our next question is also for all of the candidates, starting with Mrs. DeCaro. "With money so tight, it pains me to see our district paying $1.2 million per year for armed officers to sit outside the school and perform secretarial duties. I know that no one wants to be seen as opposing safety, but I honestly do not believe that the present solution will be at all effective and there are many examples around the country backing this up. Would any Board of Education candidate be willing to put at least a portion of this money back into our children's education or present ideas for actual cost-effective safety rather than simply the impression of safety?" Mrs. DeCaro?
Okay, so when I, when I first got on the board, it was February, it was 2018, I believe, and we had these shooting in, in Florida. And we, parents were very concerned for the safety of, of our students. And we immediately jumped into action and we had to come up with a plan for, to present, you know, to make our schools safer, to try our hardest to prevent, God forbid, a school shooting. And we researched, I know the administration reached out to the group in Sandy Hook and found out what they, you know, what they did and what their, you know, philosophies are. And we came up with this plan to, to have a, an officer in front, outside in every building. I believe that it is a big deterrent. I believe that, you know, you know, a lot of school shootings are, you know, if I can get in the building, I'm going to do it, you know? That's what their mentality is. And if you have an officer in front of the building, that's going to deter that prospective shooter, so.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Mrs. Voss?
Well, safety and security, very, very important. I, I would have to do a lot of research and just to do a little bit more research to see how to like make that different. I just feel like, like Jill said, with all the shootings and everything that has been going on, I know the schools aren't open now, but I know that in going to the schools throughout the year, whenever I was going to the school or going with a parent, everybody felt safer and it was just something that was needed to make everybody feel safer. So for me, I would have to just do a little bit more research on how, you know, we could make that different or, you know, to put it back into education. But that would be something that, you know, as a new board member, if I am a new board member, that I would, you know, just have to, you know, look at and get more information on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. As a reminder to all of our candidates, we just ask that you please do not use your phone during the event. Thank you. Mr. Weber?
In 1996, then-President Bill Clinton put out a grant money for a school district and Old Bridge received funds to hire four police officers. There was an outcry among parents. They didn't want policemen in the building to have guns. And that was quite a controversy and we did do that. And then that turned into four permanent ones after the grant money ran out after four years. I think you're going to have mixed emotions by parents all the time deciding what you're going to do as far as this goes. This might be, from what I understand also, this, this fee for this is not entirely paid by the school board. I believe half of it's paid by the township. But one of the ways to resolve it in the parents' minds is this is one of those opportunities where you can put it, you should be able to put it on the ballot as a separate entity to fund it or not fund it. And let the parents ultimately make the choice. We can have all the opinions we want here, but there's a mixed group of parents who want, don't want, you know, I mean, in the shooting in Florida, look what happened with that. There was a man who didn't go in and do his job and that it made the situation far worse. Now, I'm not saying that would happen, but there's so many variables. I, I would think that you would offer it to the public as part of a referendum and they can make the, the decision to decide how much they want to do, if they want to fund some of it or none of it.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lent?
I came on to the school board with Jill and she's right. We were one or two months into our first term when this happened and there was an outcry. Parents wanted to make sure that their children were safe when they came to our school. I do believe that you cannot 100% foolproof prevent these things from happening. The best thing that you can do is put measures in place to try to prevent it as best as you can and to deter it. I think that this is a strong deterrent. If they know that there is an officer there that is armed, it will deter them from going near the school. If they know that they can't get inside the school without facing that person first, maybe they think twice about doing it. Maybe it can save lives in the future. We don't know for sure if it's super effective or if it's just a deterrent or a total waste of money. But I know 100% if I had a child in the school district, I would want to make sure that they're safe going in and I would feel secure spending the money to try to deter someone from harming that child. You put locks on your doors at, in your house. You, you safeguard everything to help prevent and keep your child safe. So this is just one of those measures that is important for the school district to do. We're trying to keep your children safe.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Our next question is for all of our candidates again, beginning with Mrs. Voss. "How do you feel you stand out in your level of special education advocacy from the other candidates?"
As president of the Special Education PTA and working with the Special Education PTA when I wasn't there, all through my years, I was advocating with parents sitting in IUPs, making sure that the children, everything was done fairly. I was like the connection between the parents and the directors and administration. I've just had a lot of experience with, you know, advocating for the children and the parents. It's just a passion of mine. You know, to make sure everything is fair was always a word in my head that back when Alyssa first started, things were not so fair. And that's how I got started in advocating for the children and the families of Old Bridge with special needs.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Mr. Weber?
I've never been a special ed parent, but having been on the board starting in 1993 and active in the long-range planning before that from 1986, we focused on the needs of special ed children in terms of the things that we tried to do that would make their environment better for them. We now have a community of special needs children who is at around 17%, close to 1,500 students now or 1,500, 50 students now. students now, or 1,500, 50 students now in this district, which is almost 90% more than we had 10 or 11 years ago. So the district has done, I think, a superior job compared to many of our other towns. An affluent town like Edison, which has a lot of children, only has 10%. And we know that there have been districts in this county who encourage people to come to Old Bridge for the quality of the special education. I've always kept on top of the funding, as I spoke to earlier on, and I think last year at the swarm, when the question was asked about that, I recognized that the state funding was not cut for that. And so I think, I mean, I've been, it's been a concern of mine, because I think that, particularly with special needs children, it is critical to get them to the maximum level of performance, whatever level it is that they can excel at.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lent?
I do not have a child with special needs, and I certainly cannot compare it to Ms. Voss's experience with special needs children, but I do know that communication is key, and I do know that parents know what's best for their children. And I think as board members and as part of the administration, we need to work with the parents and listen to them, and try to create a plan that the child would be most successful with. And I think that communication is key, and that we just need to start listening to each other and working with each other, so that the child is successful.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Mrs. DeCaro?
Having been, well, let me backtrack. My, I have, one of my children did have an IEP going through. It finally, it was a struggle to actually make that happen, so I do understand the struggles that parents have, you know, getting their children, the help that they need. With my son, it took almost all the way through elementary to make it happen. And, you know, then he finally had an IEP, and, you know, really worked out well, and so I do understand that struggle. I understand what it's like to be in a child study team meeting. And I also have the perspective of being a paraprofessional, working for three years or so in this district, working with the special needs children. Again, one of the students I worked with, it was in a gen ed class, so I had that experience. And the other, the other, the rest of the time was spent in self-contained classes. So I have the experience of, you know, how to educate these special needs students. You know, we do have the extraordinary aid, as Mr. Weber mentioned, you know, that goes right into our special education programs, and I believe that we have a very good program in Old Bridge, and it's growing, as I said before, it's growing every year.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Our next question is also for all of the candidates, starting with Mr. Weber. What would you say to the parents who feel like the main concern in the reopening plan is the teachers and not the students? For example, not incorporating mask breaks for the elementary school children, not allowing food or snacks specifically for the youngest elementary school children. Mr. Weber?
The things that have been released from the administration. The reopening committee had one board member on it, and everybody else was either a teacher, an administrator, or they were all, there were no parents, zero parents. And by law, Old Bridge didn't, you know, they were correct, that was allowable, but many, many of the districts in the county included parents in their groups. And I think, you know, to answer the other part of it, I have no idea how many teachers had much influence on a decision. I have my own suspicions, but they were only suspicions. So, and again, as I said earlier, those teachers who have pre-existing medical conditions, God bless them, and they should not have to work in a school. And it's the ones in between that are, you know, but again, the NJEA is a very strong group, and I don't know, because, look, I will tell you this, it didn't happen in almost any of the other districts, because they have much more classroom hours than we do. So I don't know that number. You'd have to ask that of the central administration, how many teachers were in there. I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lent?
I feel that the district needs to follow CDC guidelines and put the proper protocols and PPEs in place that the students and the teachers feel secure in going back into the classroom. If a teacher does have a pre-existing condition that needs to be looked at, and then we need to make the judgment whether they return or not, but I feel that any teacher that's in good standings health-wise should return to the classroom. I think the students should be wearing masks. It is required, CDC guidelines require it everywhere else. I think that we should be having the students wearing masks. I think that we should be sanitizing and having the PPEs in place to keep everyone safe.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Mrs. DeCaro?
Yes, I would just like to clarify Mr. Weber's statement. There are parents on the reentry task force, so I just wanted to clarify that. And as far as favoring, was that the question, favoring teachers over students? Is that, I'm sorry?
I feel like the main concern is teachers and not the students.
Yeah, okay. No, not at all. It's an equal concern, okay? It's an equal concern. We needed to, we needed to, so when we were going to the hybrid originally, we did have a lot of teachers that were saying that they were afraid to come back. A lot of them were taking the Family Leave Act, they were intermittent leave and things like that. So what was happening was, it was creating, it was going to create a system where we were going to be having to get substitutes. We did not want to start the year off in a pandemic after they were, went through what they went through in the spring, being thrown into a virtual learning environment. We didn't want to start the year off with a lot of substitutes. We wanted the trained teachers to be teaching, which is why we decided, which was one of the reasons that we decided to go virtual, because then we knew that all of the teachers would be willing to participate.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro.
Thank you.
Mrs. Voss?
Yes, also, I don't think that the teachers are being favored over the students. I think it is equal. I think it's important that everybody feels comfortable coming back safe and following all the CDC guidelines, and I think the task force really had a really daunting job trying to make the decisions on when to come back, when to go virtual. I wasn't part of that, but I know in listening to people and reading a lot of stuff, that it was very, very difficult for them to make the decisions. I know the teachers are nervous and, you know, to go back, but I think with all the safety protocols in place, that we should try and, you know, go back. I don't think that there was a favor for, not that I myself know of.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Our next question is also for all of our candidates, beginning with Mrs. Lent. What do you feel are the current special education challenges facing Old Bridge School District, and how would you address those?
I think it's the same challenges facing every school district. I think there's a miscommunication between what the parent sees best for their child and what the school district may see best for their child. I think that the parents do know best, and that we need to listen to the parents to make it fair, to make sure that their needs are being met, and that we're setting the child up for success. And I think part of that, as Jill mentioned earlier, that it took almost the entire elementary school time to create, you know, a plan, good. Good enough for your son, I believe you mentioned, to succeed. That's ridiculous to take, you know, the entire elementary school life to figure out a plan. I think there's a lack of communication, and I think that we need to work better with the parents to create a plan sooner than five years for the child to succeed. I think that's way too long.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Mrs. DeCaro?
Yeah, well, that, just to clarify, that was a really long time ago. He's 27 now, so it was a really long time, and our special education program has come a very long way since then. I don't even know if there's any of the same people on staff now than there was then, so just to clarify that. But anyway, so the problems facing, what problem we think, I think is most, the biggest problem facing the district? I agree. I agree with Lisa. It's communication. We can always improve communication. I mean, the biggest problem, aside from you being in a global pandemic with, you know, major budget cuts, right? I'm assuming that they mean, that question is meaning in addition to that. But yes, communication is key, and we can always improve on that. And I know that we have just restarted to reorganize our committees to help foster better parent communication with the board and with administration. We are new, it was public relations, and we're changing it to community relations, and we're going to try to really foster that communication, that two-way communication between us and the parent. So, and that's always something that can be improved on all the time.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Mrs. Voss?
Yes, thank you. Well, I, communication, like, that is key, and I know everybody's talking about that, but for me, is the reason why I, when I first started on the Board of SEPT, I could go on and on, a lot of things for me were a parent would email me or call me, and why can't, why is this taking so long? Why didn't I hear from somebody? And that's where, for me, is my passion. I would step in and say, you know, call your case manager, let's make a meeting, I'll be happy to join you. It was just a lack of communication. It has come a really, really long way, but even now, I feel like maybe you can't, we can't have a, you know, just like a group, a committee. I used to have support groups where we used to sit and talk about issues, and then I would bring it to my director at the time, all through my years. So I do also feel like communication is a big thing, and I think that what is, parents are most concerned about right now is, especially with the pandemic, and not having information, and then stuff, things that they don't understand, and they're like, who's going to answer that question, and how do I get that answer? So I would hope that, you know, as a board, as a new board, and if the board that is existing, that communication with the parents, and just listening to their concerns and seeing, you know, how they could help them. And that is also a lot of reason why I would be at board meetings, you know, if a parent had a concern, if it was something that was on an agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Mr. Weber?
Yes, I'm glad to see that the government put in place the Parents Organization, which I think has been in effect for two years or not. Allison, is that correct? Two years, the Parent Organization. I think that one of the things, particularly for a first-time parent who's involved in the process, that there should be an outreach position in the administration, among the staff, that can meet with a group of parents and try and get a lot of their common concerns discussed and outed at a meeting like that, because this is a brand-new adventure path that they're going down for them, and you want to try and make it as easy as possible for the parent, because they already have their own concerns about, you know, and so many questions. It's great that they've had somebody like Allison to lean on as a, you know, as a SEPT person, but I think that the administration should have some obligation to make that path a lot easier.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Our next question is also for all of our candidates, beginning with Mrs. DeCaro. Many parents have been emailing the Board of Education with questions and concerns regarding remote learning, and have not received responses from most Board of Education members, including members running for reelection. This has left parents to wonder if their voice matters. What do you see as your role in addressing parent concerns?
Okay, yes. I normally, in the past, do respond to most emails. I sometimes do not respond to specific questions, because they're really for administration. Administration is the one that need, the ones that need to address any kind of problems that the, that the parent is having. Like I said, I know that I have received, and, you know, we talk amongst, you know, ourselves, did you, did you see that email? Do we know if somebody responded, and things like that? So we are recognizing the emails, we're reading the emails. To be perfectly honest with you, I should have responded to at least let them know that I saw your email, I read it, and, you know, administration will address it. So, you know, whoever asked that question, you're right, that's on me. I should have responded. I used to, but then we were getting a lot of emails, and I kind of, you know, after a while, you're saying the same thing, thank you for your email. But just so that, whoever asked the question, just so you know, a lot of those things are not in our control as board members. We refer that to administration. But again, an acknowledgement of the email should be done, yes.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Mrs. Voss? Whoops, sorry. Go ahead, Mrs. Voss.
Thank you. For me, if I'm, right now, I respond to my emails as quickly as I can. If I don't know the answer, and just as a parent, or not even as a parent, but as somebody that, you know, was part of PTA for such a long time, if I can't answer right away, it's like Jill, I would say, I will try and get an answer. I will always try and get an answer. I would hope that I would not make people wait too long, because I do have crazy work hours, but if I was on the board and there were emails coming, and especially about remote learning, you know, like Jill said, it would be an administrative question. I would just try and get to administration as soon as I can to try and get an answer, hopefully not making parents wait too long, because I know how frustrating that can be after, you know, especially with the kids not in school, they need to be in school. So I would just do my best to just try and get the answer as quick as possible, and not leave them waiting, reach out to somebody that could get them the answer as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Mr. Weber?
Yes, anytime a question comes directly from a parent, typically, or any other member of the community about a board item, it should be referred to the proper administrator. Now, if, as a board member, I don't know who that is, I would find that out before I refer somebody. For example, I might not send it to the, it doesn't need to go to the superintendent, but it might need to go to the school principal, that kind of thing. So I don't want to send, I don't want to send somebody to someone in the administration, and then they get, gets bounced around and pushed again up to somebody different, you know, because that does not help your goodwill with the patron, I mean, with the parent.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lent?
As Jill mentioned, we do receive a lot of emails, and I could speak for myself, I try to answer as many as I can. If there are several people listed on the email, we do speak behind the scenes privately, and we would, will have one of the group of people listed on the email answer, or we direct it to the correct place. It may be something that administration only could handle. It may be something that our hands are tied and we can't discuss with the public, where legal counsel tells us, no, you can't answer that. So we are restricted in some respect on what we can and can't answer with the public, but every email is read, every email is discussed behind the scenes. So even though we may not be answering you, we are hearing you, and we are discussing it and trying to figure out a solution to help solve your problem. Now, like Jill said, could we answer every email and say, yes, we received it, we're working on this? Yes, and I do apologize for that. It's just during this pandemic especially, we receive so many emails that it's such a daunting task for one person to answer every email. But we do try to make sure someone does respond, or it does get shifted to the correct people in which that can answer it.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Our next question is also for all of our candidates, beginning with Mrs. Voss this time. Since elementary school parents have been burdened with taking days off and making sacrifices to be with their children to ensure virtual learning is occurring, would you be open to allowing elementary school students full-time learning to mitigate the effects and burdens on their parents?
I might need to hear that one more time. I'm sorry.
Many...
Sorry, I was...
Many. Since elementary school parents have been burdened with taking days off and making sacrifices to be with their children to ensure virtual learning is occurring, would you be open to allowing elementary school students full-time learning to mitigate the effects and burdens on their parents?
Full-time, meaning in school five days, if that's what they meant, I, I'm not sure.
No, I'm not sure what they meant either, but.
I would love for all the kids to be back full-time learning, but I don't think that right now with obviously being the pandemic and that we need to, you know, with safety and all those guidelines, I just don't think that it would be something that could happen right away. I think it needs to be done in steps, unfortunately, and I, it's horrible that the parents have to, you know, miss work or decide to go, like, make a choice, work or, or, you know, virtual learning. But I don't, I don't feel like it's right now the kids can be back, the children could be back five days right now. I hope that it will come soon. I hope that we don't have to close schools once we all go back in, but I just, right now, don't think that five days, you know, would happen this soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Mr. Weber?
It's all a matter of logistics. For example, last year, you lost almost four months or roughly 40% of the school year. So, if your child is a first grader or maybe a second grader and they're not proficient in the use of a computer, and particularly if they have parents who maybe are not that proficient, that's an awful burden for them to try and expect a child that age to do virtual learning. Now, one of the ways and other districts have done it, they've kept lower-grade elementary schools in school full-time or the half-day, whatever they're running. Some of them are running full days. This is public schools in this county. And you leave the middle school kids and the higher, and the higher kids that have the computer skills, more of those, you can get the virtual learning. That's a formula that's got to be played with and worked out by the administration. As far as the concept goes, yes, I think it's a concept that would make more sense because otherwise, this pandemic could go through for another, the rest of this school year and that second, first or second grader will have had a year and a half of computer learning and is probably going to have a difficult time getting back to where he or she should have been.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lent?
I said it earlier, as a single working parent, when my son was young, I don't know how I would have done it, choosing between work, paying the bills and staying home to make sure he was on the computer learning. I think that it is possible to figure out a plan. I think it's going to take a lot of time and effort to make sure everyone is safe and that protocols are in place and that the teachers coming in feel comfortable doing so. But I think it is possible and I would love to see the students, especially the elementary school-age students, be back in the classroom full-time. I think it's something that we need to really work on and maybe it isn't successful the first time around. Maybe we have to tweak it and change it up as we go, but I think the effort has to be there and we have to try something to get them back in the classroom.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Mrs. DeCaro?
I absolutely want the children to go back five days a week. There is no replacement for in-school learning. A virtual learning environment is, is not a replacement for being in school full-time. It's just not. Unfortunately, we have to follow the science and the data and what we're receiving is, you know, our guidance from, you know, our CDC guidelines and we have to follow that. We have to follow those guidelines. We, we, I don't know that there are too many districts that are open with full-time students in this county. Most are in some sort of hybrid schedule. I know a lot of them did start virtual and moved to hybrid. I understand that some of them are currently, you know, they, they're doing the AB instead of the ABC or the 1, 2, 3, but due to our size, we felt that this was the safest, the safest move for students and parents. And, and I, I don't know how parents are doing it. I, I, my heart goes out to them. We have to go protect the safety and the health of students, families, teachers. I mean, that's really our biggest concern. We are getting the students back, we're starting to get them back in a hybrid manner, so hopefully.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Okay, our next question is also for all of our candidates, beginning with Mr. Weber. We are in a time of isolation where we are seeing divisiveness and lack of empathy for others. As a board member, what would be one specific thing you would like to do or would like to see the district do that would bring, that would be uplifting and create a better sense of unity across the district and bring us closer together? Mr. Weber?
Program. And I'd like to see the board go back to character.org and see if they can up their game because they have been, we've been probably the most active school district in the state. I think we have more schools under their banner than many of the states in this country do. So, I would assume that that program was supposed to deliver that kind of mindset already.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lent?
I would like to see programs and classes put in place that talks about diversity and inclusion and exposes children to other ethnic backgrounds, other races. I, I think it's important for us to learn early on the, what acceptance is and how to work together regardless of whoever you're working with. And I think it's important to start early on and I think that we need to develop programs and classes to put our children in and get them exposed to it.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Mrs. DeCaro?
Things to create unity. You know, before this pandemic, we were such a, we always came together as a community, you know, but like, like the question says, we're in isolation right now and it's just so difficult. What I would like to see is maybe some sort of virtual, virtual district-wide family event. You know, after 9/11, I was the president of Sharaw School and I was, I'm sorry, I was the vice president of fundraising. And we put out a fundraiser in the beginning, in September, and then 9/11 hit and, you know, there was nothing, you know, the fundraiser tanked, nobody was interested in buying wrapping paper at that time. Everybody, the whole country was in mourning and, but we had to move on, we had to live and we needed to create another event. And one of the things that was very, very important to us was to create, again, something that was community involvement. We were very, it was very important that we involved the community because families needed to see other families. It was so important. So, we created Family Fun Night and it was a great time for all the families to get out, have fun together, to see each other. And I think, you know, something like that would be good.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Thank you. Mrs. Voss?
Hi, yes. You know, I almost had the same idea as Jill. I was thinking, I know virtual is a word that we don't want to keep adding, but I think something, Old Bridge has always been, you know, since we can't do fundraising now and we've always done great events and come together, Fall Fest, just an amazing thing that we cannot do anymore. So, you know, I was, you know, thinking virtual support groups, virtual Facebook, like positive, positive parent Facebook maybe page or, I know there's a lot of Facebook pages out there, but, and I know virtual is something that everybody's doing, but I just think maybe something even virtual for the kids, six-foot social distancing, you know, just something where they can come together and maybe see their friends, even their teachers maybe be involved. But I know it's hard, we can't do any kind of fundraising and, and events and it's just, it's just, you know, I just feel like maybe something virtual, you know, just something that they can do and see their friends. Even a support group for the parents, you know, where we can talk about, you know, good things, concerns and, and again, communication is something that the board is very interested in this year, always has been and going forward, which is a, you know, a big thing for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Our next question is for all of candidates, beginning with Mrs. Lent. Most candidates are speaking about bringing back the most vulnerable students in self-contained placement, back to in-person learning. What about students with a general education placement that require in-person learning to be educated, such as students that receive OT, speech and one-to-one paraprofessional support?
I think there are ways to bring those students back safely. I, I think that we just need to explore them better, whether it's putting barriers up, the shields to protect people, whether it's social distancing where you are working one-on-one and you are back, but you're socially distant from each other. I, I think that we just need to explore more options. Take a look at what other districts are doing, what is succeeding and mimic that. And, you know, as mentioned earlier, not every district is the same, but I think that we should take the bits and pieces of what other districts are doing that are working and apply it to our district and piece it together and create a plan that's going to be beneficial to our students. I think, you know, we're not looking for perfection, but we need progress. We need to start moving forward and I think we need to start collaborating with the teachers, with the students, with the parents and have an open communication and hearing suggestions and taking those suggestions into account and creating a better plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Mrs. DeCaro?
It's a very good question. You know, what I can say, and, and I appreciate the question, but what I can say is that by October 26th, on the hybrid plan, all the elementary schools will be back and, you know, on the hybrid. And there is, in the plan, there's accommodations for PT, OT and things like that. You know, and, and the reason that we had to divide it up the way that we did is because of the live streaming. I think I had started mentioning, mentioning it earlier. We decided that it was important to do the live streaming and we needed to check our broadband and that's what's unfortunately delaying the, the whole school from coming back as a hybrid on the 12th because we want to make sure that we have all of the broadband for doing the live streaming that we need. So, you know, I just also want to say, I was on a New Jersey School Boards Association county meeting last night and I can tell you that all the school districts are in the same boat. They're all trying to figure out how to accommodate and how to make these things happen for these, especially these vulnerable kids and the children with the PT and the OT and the in-class resource, you know, just to try to get them back when they can. This is not a unique situation to Old Bridge.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Mrs. Voss?
Yes. I can't even imagine how hard it is to do OT, PT, speech and have one-on-one power situations virtually. I just wish there was some way, like Lisa said, other options to try and get the kids with their, with their therapies, but also that, you know, safety again and, you know, how the teachers feel about coming back. And it's just like such a difficult, difficult thing, but these services are so important and need to be one-on-one. I just wish that there was some way to get it done, but, you know, still be mindful of all the CDC guidelines and, you know, just, just to get it done for the kids is my thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Mr. Weber?
The, I mean, a medical term, my wife is a nurse, so I've heard it so, so many times, is you basically have to triage the kids on the, what level of service should be provided to those children who need it most desperately. And all of that still comes back to how do you get more efficient use of the buildings? How do you get use of that? For example, I know Jill mentioned that, you know, Old Bridge is a, is a large district, but it's the sixth largest district and the third largest town in the county and there are two or three districts right behind us who are growing while we're shrinking. So, this is not a unique situation and these other districts have, seem to have more productive programs than we do. We have two full days allotted during the week for cleaning. I don't see that in anybody else's schedule. So, I, you know, unless they're doing it at night or whenever they're doing the cleaning and I assuming, I'm assuming that they're all following the CDC criteria. So, I think you need to do this because obviously I think we're derelict if we don't give the most needy children the most schooling possible on a first, first come, first served basis with them.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Our next question is for Mr. Weber and Mrs. Lent. Mr. Weber, you'll answer first. Mr. Weber and Mrs. Lent keep speaking to teachers with health conditions and yes, they should be home. What about teachers that have childcare issues? The same kind of situations that you are saying parents are also facing, teachers are facing as well. So, they are faced with double pressure as working parents and as an educator. What would you say to those teachers? Mr. Weber?
Especially if they are working parents and, or two parents working, it's the most difficult. Now, I do believe that there is some federal aid for them not to teach if they, if they're in that situation where they have a mother-in-law, a mother lives with them who's, who's sick or whatever the issue may be, that they, they need to be home to take care of that. Now, obviously, if that takes them out of the availability for our district, that means, that's one of the criteria, I believe, that allows them to do that. But along the way, there's going to have to be government, more additional government aid to provide for that and on the, on the offset to get as many new teachers, even if there may be some teachers who haven't quite finished their, their provisional work, get them earlier on into the system in some portion of it or make those changes which are ever going to get the most of people available to get kids back in the building.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lent?
As Frank just mentioned, I, I forget if it's paid family leave or, or family medical leave, but there are federal provisions now for working parents that aren't able to work due to the fact that their children aren't in school and they don't have any other care. With that being said, I can't imagine what it's like being a teacher, trying to work and having your children home and you're doing dual roles and I, I appreciate how difficult that, that would be. And I don't have an answer off the top of my head for you. I, I would imagine it's similar to any other working parent juggling two different things, trying to, to work and support your family and worrying about your childcare. But then it, just like them, it comes down to, do you have to work? If you do have to work, then you do have to find alternate care for your children. Hopefully, those teachers, their school districts that their students are, that their children are in, would create a plan where their, their kids could go back to school and they could find alternate care. There is no one set answer that covers everyone and I think it's a case-by-case basis and obviously everyone's going to have an individual situation that applies to them that there isn't going to be a blanket answer for. And I, I think each teacher needs to evaluate their situation and do what's best for them and their family. And if they're able and willing to come back to teach, fantastic. We welcome you back.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Our next question is for all of our candidates, beginning with Mrs. DeCaro. Do you think there should be term limits, term limits for Board of Education members? And if so, how many terms should they be allowed to serve?
You know what? I, I do. I do think that there should be term limits because I do believe that, that there needs to be a constant turnover of fresh perspective coming from your Board of Education members. They need to have their finger on the pulse and, and really know and understand the parents. I would say, you know, the one thing that I will say is the first term, especially the first year, is, is very difficult because it's a big learning year and as, as involved as I was, you know, up until I, I got elected to the board, I can tell you that first year was just a big learning experience and it was incredibly overwhelming with what I realized I did not know. So, that was, so really it was. So that was, so really, it was two years of like real, you know, the whole first term is learning. I feel like I really have a grasp on things now, so definitely a second term. I would say either three or four terms, and then, you know, maybe you should, you know, step aside and let someone else in. Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Mrs. Voss?
Term limit, yes. I think that there should be a limit on term. I agree with Jill. I would assume that the first term alone, the first three years, is very daunting, and it's a very big learning experience. Sometimes change is good. They tell me that in my life. I was in one store for 20 years. They just moved me to another store, telling me, change is good. So it's just learning, learning something new. And I think a term limit would be good. And I agree with Jill. I think about four years and 12 years total would be, you know, a good term for a Board of Education person to learn the first term and then kind of like, you know, get into it and just be the voice of the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Mr. Weber?
I would really be more concerned about our U.S. senators and representatives having limited terms rather than the Board of Education. In the first couple of elections that I ran in, we had somewhere between 12 and 15 or 17 candidates. Now, we've seen recent years where we've only had three. So if you, you know, if you go forward with term limits, and obviously, if you went forward with term limits, I've already served 18 years, so I'd have to give six back based on its recommendation. But if you've got people, viable people, to fill the seats and who are going to have the skill sets, I say, fine, that's absolutely great. But we've seen in some cases, you know, a paucity of candidates in recent years. This year, we're lucky we have five. I mean, other recent years, we've just had three. And it's not unique to Old Bridge. It's all throughout the county. You see district after district that has three or four candidates for three seats. So term limits would be a bright idea, provided you have people to replace them. Because if you've got a good board member on there who's been productive and is still interested, even if they don't have a child in the district any longer, and they have an interest in pursuing that to better the community, I think that, you know, there are some setbacks to term limits.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lentz?
I agree. There are some setbacks with term limits, and as long as the community is involved and you do have viable candidates running for the positions, I think term limits would do well. I feel that three terms would work fantastic. As Jill mentioned, our first term, it was a lot of learning. And as much as you think you know going into it, once you're in it, it's a lot of learning, because new things pop up, the shooting, the pandemic, budget cuts, that you can't prep for. So I feel that the first term was primarily learning and just getting your feet wet. Second term, I feel that you could really make an impact and a difference. And then your third term, you could act almost as a big brother, big sister, and help the new people coming in learn and get the experience and education that you've had for the past several years and pass it on to them. But again, term limits are good, as long as you have candidates willing to come in from the community and willing to run. As Frank mentioned, there's times where we only had three, and those three were running unopposed. I'm not sure what we would do in that situation if there were term limits.
Thank you, Mrs. Lentz. Our next question is for all of our candidates, beginning with Mrs. Voss. In regards to the reopening plan, would you have preferred to start fully remote? Also, please share your thoughts on whether you agree with the 33% capacity model or if you'd have gone with the 50% model like other districts. Mrs. Voss?
So 33% doesn't sound, is not a lot. I just felt like it was the best decision with the, all the safety and all the guidelines that we need to follow. I know it doesn't, it doesn't sound like a lot, but I think it was a good jumping-off spot to start and get everybody back in, see how it worked, make sure everybody was safe. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but I just felt like, you know, if we went back 50%, there would be a bigger chance of schools maybe, like somebody getting sick and then the quarantine and having to close it down completely. So I know 33% isn't a lot, but I think it was like the best decision at this time to start off that way.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Mr. Weber?
Yeah. Again, the 33% model is almost nonexistent, to my knowledge, throughout the county and the rest of the state. There are districts who are doing some unique things, such as South Brunswick. They have a plan where the elementary school kids go for six and a half hours a day for one consecutive week. So that's 32 and a half hour a day. Now, over the four-week period, that's what they wind up doing for the whole month. We do four hours a week for four weeks. So we do 16 hours of classroom instruction. So it's twice as much, plus two and a half hours extra. And there are ABC schedules where they just do them two days, two days, two days, and that. When you go through a nine-day cycle, they all have gone twice. So there's a lot of innovative things to do that don't justify 33%. I don't think it's sufficient. I would opt for the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lentz?
I understand the reasoning behind the 33% because you can build on that. And I think initially, it's important to make sure that you have everything in place for these children to succeed and for everyone to stay safe. I feel from the 33%, we should pretty quickly move to the 50%. And I understand it's easier to build on rather than take away. So I understand the reasoning behind it. Would I like to see 100% of the kids back? Yes. I think that 33% is a starting point, and then we need to move to 50% as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Lentz. Mrs. DeCaro?
Yeah, so I pretty much agree with what Lisa just said. I believe that the 33% was a very good starting point. We wanted to make sure that we had everything in place that we needed, all the PPE, the thermometers, the, you know, whatever we needed, the isolation tent. We needed to make sure that what we had in place was going to work, which is why we chose, you know, the administration chose to start with the 33%. I also do agree, I would like to, once we get started and see how it works, I would like to, as quickly as possible, get up to at least a 50% model if we can. But again, it all depends on the data, it depends on the science, and it depends on what happens when we start opening up in the hybrid. You know, we just don't know. You know, there's positive cases that are coming, so we need to be very mindful of that. And we need to understand that this is a very fluid plan. And if we have no cases, no positives, if we don't have to stop and close a school or quarantine anything, then right away, you know, let's move it to 50%. And hopefully, sooner rather than later, get back to full day. That is the goal. That's the ultimate goal. But at the same time, we just want to do it safely and with the least amount of, you know, quarantining or closing.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Our next question is for all. Given the rising numbers of cases in Old Bridge in the last couple of weeks, how do you think the administration Board of Education should handle that? Mr. Weber?
All right. Now, are we talking among school-age children or cases overall?
It doesn't give any specifics. It just says of the rising number of cases in Old Bridge.
All right. Then, without knowing what the rising of the cases was, it's pretty difficult to answer that, whether it's what age group it's in. Typically, I participate in the Friday meetings with the OEM people and am versed on when all of the numbers come in and how many of them come in. Yeah, they have been on the rise in Old Bridge, as they haven't been in many towns. We stand township-wise, we stand as Middlesex, County stands as, not as bad as Essex, Hudson County, going up to New York City. And as you come further down, you go from Middlesex into Monmouth into Ocean, they tend to be lower, because it's all based on, based on how much traffic goes in and out of the city among commuters. Most of the cases, virtually none of the cases have impacted students. Now, a student could be quarantined because of a parent or grandparent in a home, but that would take them out of the school population. So without having a clarification on a question, I can't go beyond that.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mrs. Lentz?
I agree. It's a little difficult to answer this question, but considering the amount of people in the township, the number of cases coming in is relatively very small in comparison to the number of people that we have. And obviously, as more people are going back to work and more people are commuting, you're going to see a spike in cases. And that would work in any township. How we would handle that? Again, if it's in reference to the schools, we have to enforce CDC guidelines and make sure that the students are taking the proper protocol, that the teachers are taking the proper protocols, wearing masks, I think is key. I think that's part of it. It's inconvenient, it's uncomfortable, but it's necessary. Unfortunately, sometimes you've got to do things in life that you don't really like, but it's required. And it's not for my safety, it's for your safety, really. And I think people in general need to understand that. And they need to follow the guidelines and try to slow the curve down and slow the spike down. And I feel if we do that and we all participate and do the proper protocols, follow CDC guidelines, we could get the kids back in school sooner. It's just, it's a community effort.
Can I just say something?
Thank you, Mrs. Lentz.
Can I just say something?
No, I'm sorry. That would be out of turn.
Superintendent Sidedino sits on the same group of people.
I'm sorry, we can't have any out-of-turn speaking. I'm sorry. Thank you. Mrs. DeCaro?
Okay. So, yeah, we just got a text from the township, was it today or yesterday? I forget. But it was something 40-something, 47 or 43 new cases since our last, the last reporting, which is, you know, even though it is a low number comparatively speaking for our township, it's a high number comparative, you know, it's a high number regardless, you know, 47, 43 people. That's a lot of people that are infected. Again, we don't know, are they school-age children? Are they adults? Are they symptomatic? Are they, are they in the hospital? You know, there's a lot of things that we don't know, you know, about those cases. And what, we need to, this is why we have the hybrid plan that we have. This is why we stayed virtual, you know? This is why we're going back and we're taking it very, very seriously, and we're taking it very, very slow, because of, because we don't want to have to deal with an outbreak. Because I have to say personally, if we do send these kids back and there is an uptick of the numbers, and God forbid, someone gets seriously ill from COVID-19 because we wanted to push the kids back, I couldn't live with that.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Mrs. Voss?
Yes, I also got that text message, 47 cases. To me, I looked at that and said, that's a lot. And also, without knowing, you know, if it was children's school age, I know that the Board and the administration would enforce guidelines, do whatever they would, whatever they need to, to keep everybody safe. And I also agree that, I think that's why the hybrid model is good right now, get the kids in at 33% and then build on it. But I know that everything would be enforced and the children would be as safe as they could in the school.
Thank you, Mrs. Lentz. I'm sorry, Mrs. Voss. My apologies. Our next question is for Mr. Weber. You have advocated closing Grissom and Cooper schools. Do you still think that they should be closed? And how specifically would those closures bring additional revenue into the district as they sit in residential areas? And what should happen to those buildings? Can you turn your mic on? Thank you.
I haven't been on the Board since 2017, and we talked about, as enrollment was declining, we had 10,007 students in the year 2004 and 2005. New homes in this town stopped being built in 2006, even though the housing market, the financial market, didn't collapse until 2008. We've lost since 2004 and 2005, almost 1,400 or 1,500 students, all throughout the three of those things. We have schools in the county that are the smallest schools, we have the smallest schools in the county, which cost you a lot of money. Those are decisions that the full Board has to make. I can give you the numbers and point you to what the answer is, but I haven't been active in the Board for the last three years, so I don't know what else they have in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Okay, folks, this will be our final question of the night. It is for everyone, beginning with Mrs. Lentz. What will be your priority if elected?
I think the district is facing a few different issues. My two main concerns would be the budget. Obviously, I think it's important for any Board member, current or running, to understand accounting and understand financial statements, know how to read them, and know how to decipher them. And I think they need the ability then to make some hard decisions if it comes to it. And second is virtual learning and bringing the students back into the classroom. I think that's very important, and I think that's going to be basically everyone's main concern, not just mine. We all want what's best for the students and for the township, and I think those two are the main concerns of everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Lentz. Mrs. DeCaro?
My main, my main objective would be to get the kids back into school. I think it is so important to have them in the buildings. I also, as I don't mean to repeat, Mrs. Lentz, but the budget is also extremely important. We're going to be facing, you know, additional cuts, and we need to figure out how to function with those cuts being made to our state aid while only being allowed to increase the tax levy by 2%. So there's a disparity between the tax levy and what our state aid is going to be. So that's going to be a big challenge moving forward to maintain the programs, the wonderful programs that we have in Old Bridge. We do not want to, my goal is to not cut any programs, so that's going to be a big priority and to try to come up with, come up with innovative ways to juggle our budget and provide the same wonderful education that the students are receiving now, provide that same education with less money. And that's going to be a big priority. Also, communication, you know, as was mentioned before, communication with the parents and include them more in decision-making.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Mrs. Voss?
Well, obviously, you know, priority, the very first priority is, of course, bringing the children back into school. For me, I have actually three. My second one would be for me to learn more about the budget and the financial part of it, you know, learning from the Board members that have been on here, just so I can make better choices and sound decisions on when we're voting on things having to do with the budget and programs, which are truly, we have amazing programs, and never wanting to cut any kind of program. And the third thing for me, my priority, is absolutely communication between parents, the Board, and administration. And I know we talked about that all night, but being a parent out there, being PTA, knowing that's a concern of parents, how to get the information to the Board, you know, in a timely manner and get answers in a timely manner. So I would like to be part of that communication focus for the Board this year. That is a priority.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Mr. Weber?
Yes, I think getting the children back to school. On the original survey that came out, 41% of the parents wanted their kids to go to school. That's 8%, which is about 20% more than the 33% which the current plan allows. That plan was rolled out when the rates of infection were considerably higher than they are now. So I think that the district has to... So I think that the district has to move on that and listen to the people and get kids back in the classes in greater numbers. And I have to be a little more creative. You know, there's no shame in looking at other districts and find out what's working. The budget, we put ourselves in the same hole. That's why I voted six times no in the last six budgets up till 2017, simply because we were spending state aid, which we should know we shouldn't have had and what the consensus was there. Well, if they keep giving us the money, we're going to spend it. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Each candidate will now have two minutes to provide a closing statement, starting with Mrs. DeCaro. Mrs. DeCaro?
So just with the, just to address the disparity in our budget, actually, voting no for the budget over those years caused the disparity that we have now. Had the budget been raised, you know, appropriately, maybe, you know, 1%, 2%, had we gotten our tax levy up a little bit higher slowly over those years, our disparity between our state aid and what our tax levy is now would be less. So I don't know that it was a very good thing to, to, you know, say that you voted no on the budget every year. According to the state, and I'm not saying, I'm a taxpayer in Old Bridge and I think my taxes are, you know, I don't want to pay any more taxes. But according to the state, they say that Old Bridge is not paying its fair share of taxes. That's the state, that's not me saying that, which is why our state aid has been cut. So, you know, had we increased our taxes a little bit along the way over the years, our disparity between what our state aid is and what our tax levy is would be less. And we would not be in this financial deficit that we're in currently. So that being said, you know, I know a lot of the questions tonight were on the reentry because that is what is on everyone's mind. And I can tell you that if elected, I will, you know, do what I continue to do what I'm doing, rolling up my sleeves, asking the questions, you know, being a part of the process to try to get these kids back to school in a safe manner, in a productive manner, and not so that we'd have to close the schools again because of an outbreak.
Thank you very much, Mrs. DeCaro. Mrs. Voss?
Yes, thank you. Well, I can't talk a lot about all those budget things. I'm hoping to learn all that, very, very important information. I just want to say thank you. I'm very happy and honored to be here and be considered as, you know, a candidate for this amazing Board in this amazing town. 26 years I've been here and it has been just amazing seeing it grow and the Board grow and everything it does for the children. I would love to be part of that, you know, part of that family-child Board, I know I keep saying that, administration connection. I feel like that would be something that I would be able to do. And learning how to get along and learning everything I need to do because I know that if elected, my first year or first three years for me probably would be a big learning curve. But I really feel like I could get that done and be there for the children and families of Old Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Mr. Weber?
Yes, one thing I'd like to do is comment on Mrs. DeCaro's characterization of I sank the budget. I was only one of nine members, and I think in any of those six years, no more than two of us voted no. Every one of those budget fully passed at the maximum cap allow, which is 2%. So that's entirely incorrect, what you said. The other thing is, I think we need to realize we still owe $11 million against state money that was kept and not returned because we were being overfunded and it was raised. There's nobody here in this room that was in any of the closed session meetings that I brought that up when I realized it in about 2009 or '10. And at that point, they said, no, they keep giving us the money and they kept spending it. So they were gaining money from that, they were gaining money from tax ratings going up. The budget's $175 million. It went up 22% in six or seven years, far beyond the cost of living. And the cost for student went up from $14,000 over $20,000, which exceeds the rate at Rutgers for a commuting student. The good news about Rutgers is they only go there four or five years. In Old Bridge, they go here for 13 years. And then even when they get out, you still pay the taxes if you don't have children in the district. I think the other thing that's important is that we have four members who are classified by the state of New Jersey law as being subject to the nepotism law. Two of them are candidates, Mrs. DeCaro or Mrs. Lent. They have limited ability to vote on a number of items. And I suggest that people look that up. Don't take my word for it. Look up the nepotism law. There's a number of things they can't do, and I'll have it posted on the site shortly so they can look it up there as well. We have a tough time, and I think we can, we can get through the budget crisis.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. And Mrs. Lent?
I just want to start off by, you know, saying thank you to the other candidates. I don't appreciate breaking down other candidates to make yourself look better. I think that we all bring something to the table and we all could offer a lot to be part of the Board. And I'm very proud of the Old Bridge community and these other candidates up on the stage with me for trying. That being said, if given the opportunity to serve a second term, I would continue to fight to get the students back into a safe classroom, in-person classroom, fight for financial transparency, fiscal responsibility. The budget really doesn't work as if you get $10, you get to squirrel away $5 for a rainy day. It doesn't work that way. You have to spend the money or you get less money the next year. So I think there's some confusion there. But I would love to be reelected for a second term. And I can guarantee you that I would work very hard and continue, like Jill said, to roll up my sleeves and add to the Board as best as I can, as I've been doing the past three years. Yes, there is a conflict. I do have a family member that works for the Board. But look at, look at the past three years and see what I was unable to participate in because it's extremely few items that I wasn't able to participate in. But there are a lot of important subjects that I did participate in and I think I contribute a lot to. And I think the taxpayer and the community member need to focus in on those items and really take a look at each candidate up here and compare it to your life and how it would affect you and who would fight for you. And I think, like I said earlier, every candidate brings something. I bring a business background and accounting background, and I think I could add a lot to the Board. And I hope, given the opportunity, to continue, just say thank you and I appreciate the chance. And I appreciate you running.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Okay, that concludes our Candidates' Night. Thank you for joining us this evening. We hope that this program will help you make an informed decision on Election Day. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our volunteer committee who handled our questions. Thank you to Mr., I'm so sorry. Mr. G, and I practiced that before, and the TV crew. Lastly, I would like to thank the OBEA, our cosponsors for this evening. Please remember to cast your ballot on Election Day, Tuesday, November 3rd. Have a good night.